Welcome to this regular meeting of the Biloxi City Council on April sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Being that there is a change to the agenda, do we have a motion to amend the agenda?
Aye.
Motion by Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Tisdale, all in favor. Unanimous vote with Guines out of the room. Ms. Carey, will you read those changes?
To the consent agenda, we're substituting item five G exhibits A and B only for resolution authorizing entry into agreement for sale and purchase of three twenty-one Division Street.
I move the agenda as amended.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Lawrence to motion it as amended, and second by Mr. Tisdale. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous vote. This brings us to the presentation agenda. Mayor's report.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. I do, I'm gonna ask the chief to come up and add to what I'm, a little report that I think I, we need to report on this. This past weekend, we, I think our preparation for our crowd of about thirty thousand, although the, I think it was down to twenty thousand, I think it went very smoothly from a, a public safety issue. I know, as we go forward, I think we can iron out whatever wrinkles that showed up this weekend, but I think the preparation and the, you know, the, the planning from special events and the whole team was, I applaud you and everyone involved in, from the county to, to do the right thing and have the, you know, work as smoothly as they can. So, Chief, I'll give it to you.
Thank you, Mayor. I think that's a good estimate, somewhere between fifteen and twenty thousand. We've tried to, to analyze that and find out why, you know, why the numbers were down, and I think it's several things. One, the Coast Coliseum canceled their event, and immediately right after that, we saw a decline in room, of room rentals. And then also, there was a lot of Facebook chatter about folks who were scared to come back from what took place last year. Some of them even said they weren't coming back, and, you know, was trigger happy, and they weren't gonna come back. And I'm sure that there are probably some, some other reasons. I know that the media, in a roundabout way, it kind of appeared that the beaches were closed to some out-of-state folks because of the way that was handled in the media, which was not the truth. So I think all that, probably, and some other reasons, are the reasons that we saw a decrease in, in folks here. But I'll run over some numbers right quick, and if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them for you. Through the week, we had two thousand five hundred and thirty-eight calls for service. Out of that two thousand five hundred and thirty-eight calls, and that was for the whole week, seven hundred and forty of those calls were in the event area from Friday through Sunday. We made sixty arrests, there were thirty-one firearms seized, sixty-one drug seizures. The police department towed forty vehicles, and then we checked on private toes, and it appears that private property owners towed about thirty-six vehicles themselves. There was some controversy about us arresting folks for obstructing the sidewalk. That is not accurate. In the event area across from the Quality Inn is where we had the biggest, the biggest influx of people. So let me, let me break that down a little bit. If you rode down the beach, you would see several hundred folks here on the beach, maybe a thousand here, a few more hundred here, and it was kind of that way down the beach, which we were glad to see more, more people on the beach this year than ever before. But around Quality Inn, there was Friday and Saturday both, somewhere between, depending on what time of the day it was, between three thousand, five thousand in that small area. And that caused, that caused some issues, to the point that the sidewalk was obstructed, and people that were walking to any of these other gatherings had to actually walk out into U.S. Highway ninety to get around it. So we had gone over on foot first and asked everyone to please back up, gonna go to the beach, get on the beach, but leave the sidewalk open where people could get by and not have to get out into the roadway. And that, we were kind of ignored on that. We went back and did it with a public service announcement over, over a loudspeaker a couple of times, to please back off. And the ones that did not comply with us, we did make several arrests there, disobeying a lawful order by obstructing the sidewalk from anyone else passing. So there were several of those arrests made, and like I said, everything was right there at the Quality Inn Service Drive. So by late afternoon on Friday, we went ahead and shut that Service Drive down because of the amount of people that kept forcing their way out into the roadway. I guess that was probably about seven o'clock, we shut it down. And then on Saturday, well, we were forced to shut that down around four o'clock in the afternoon because of the same issues. And like I said, the majority of the gun calls and, and problems that we had, fight calls, were in that area. I know we had one call where the, the vendor booth for the jet skis, somebody was trying to flip that over, we made an arrest there with a gun also. And then there were several businesses that had called for assistance also. Most of your larger businesses had called to get their part, their parking lots cleared. So there would be somewhere between three and five thousand in the mall parking lot and across the street at Edgewater Village, and then it was the same for the Walmart parking lot, quite a few people there, and all, all had called and asked at, at some point or another that we try to clear their parking lot. Now I can answer any question.
Let me jump in, just right there, right in that particular part of the beach. The beach is supposed to be two hundred and thirty feet width and width, and it's probably less than a hundred feet at that point, right at that little point. So that erosion, you know, from the, the, the coastline pier towards the mall is, is mad. So I mean, you could have a little bit more real estate in order to, you know, spread the crowd, but that is the, probably, a, a narrow spot of that whole beach, and that didn't, you know, add to.
That's right.
A level of comfort there.
That, that, that's good, that is.
Mother Nature and Littoral Drift.
That is true, yes, sir.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
Chief, did we deny anybody food truck rights from that to anything?
Yes. If, if they didn't have a permit, they couldn't, they couldn't, they couldn't be a vendor. There was only one permit that was, that was applied for, and that was denied, and y'all know the reasons for that, we went over that here. No one else applied for a, for any kind of vendor's license. I know there was some people complaining because there weren't vendors on the beach, but my recommendation to them, next year, apply for the special permit, and then you can have the vendors.
Well, one person on TV kept saying that she didn't never get her food truck approved. It was easy to say stuff on TV, so that's why I'm gonna ask that question.
She didn't, she didn't get approval because there was no one that had, that had, there was no special events permit that was enacted in the city of Biloxi. And he, like I said, the only one that they tried to get, we denied simply because of, of, they could not comply with what we had asked. And we went back and looked at that parking lot. If you put the vendors on a shoe or lot, I thought this was interesting, you put the vendors on there, and then you really only have room for maybe fifty, sixty cars is all you have room for. And so we were accurate in telling them that they had to have a better parking plan for thirty thousand people is what, what, what had been told us to expect, and that's what we expected. So that, having that vendor, having that shoe or lot closed with nothing, with, with the event across the street from where everybody gathered was a, probably, a, a, a big lifesaver for us. We didn't have as many people crossing Highway ninety.
Well, you, you know, get on TV, say anything you want, and we can't prove that.
Sure.
So that's why I'm gonna ask those questions.
Yes, sir.
How did they wind up walking at Edgewater? I know they had on fancy call with the fancy lights, were they parked illegally, or did they get permits to do that?
No, uh, well, there, there's signs out there that tell you that if you're not, if you're not a patron of the mall, you can't park there, but I don't think the mall did much about that until it got close to closing time, and then they, naturally, they wanted the parking lot emptied at that point.
So they just, just pretty much parked there?
Yeah, sure. A lot of the neighborhoods, we got complaints out of the neighborhoods also. And that accounts for the, for the thirty-six private toes that we know took place, and it may have been more, but we can count for thirty-six that private people called on, you know, one of them towed and had them towed themselves.
Did you have any trouble with the parking bays after ten o'clock?
Uh, not really. Once we, once we closed down Quality Inn Service Drive, we really didn't have any problems with the rest of them. And there was a lot of, there was a lot of parking bays as you got further down the beach that were open, that we didn't see a lot of people in.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else have questions? Go ahead.
There was thirty-one.
Yeah, Chief, I, I drove, it's in my board, I drove my, my route from Pass Road down Beauvoir Road along Highway ninety, in and out of Briarfield, in and out of Breeze Point, and in and out of Edgewater Park, and then through the Edgewater Mall, Mall Parking Lot. I did that Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, roughly five to five-thirty, somewhere in there. The traffic was always moving, it was heaviest on Saturday afternoon. Typically, that little circuit that I drive might take me twenty-five minutes. Two weeks ago, the longest it took me was forty-seven or forty-eight minutes, so the traffic was moving pretty good. The folks in Briarfield subdivision, with one exception, said it was terrific this year. It was best managed, I noticed there was a, a lot of law enforcement officers there helping with ingress and egress out of the neighborhoods. And ha- having said that, and the officers I spoke with, and from what I observed, the spring breakers, from what I saw, were well behaved, pretty much staying out of the, out of the, out of the traffic. Crossing Highway ninety was, was an issue from time to time, and I noticed that the lanes, it went from double lanes in each direction to a single lane, of course, when, when the traffic picked up, and that always irritates some people, as well as putting the barricades in between the east and westbound lanes at intersections. But again, this is, this is an event that's, we'll do this again next year, I'm sure. The same situation will apply. I want to point out that there are two east-west corridors in Biloxi, which contributes to this congestion issue. One is Highway ninety, east and west, and the other is Irish Hill to Pass Road, east and west. And of course, when Highway ninety gets packed, almost a gridlock, and I never saw that this year, but when it gets that packed, everybody moves to Pass Road and Irish Hill, which then leads to more gridlock. So, A, the cones are needed, B, you have to close it from two lanes to one lane when the traffic pick, picks up and, and really gets congested, so first responders can get to where they have to go in a timely manner. All of that, based on what I saw, seemed to work really well this year. Driving through the Edgewater Parking Lot, as you mentioned, it was packed, you could not find a place to park, and folks were hanging out particularly there by Pep Boys on Saturday afternoon, or Sunday afternoon, just clumps here and there. But anyway, all things considered, the feedback I'm getting is, is in terms of safety and welfare and concern of the residents in that area, this, this was the best year for this event in many years. So thank you and your staff for that.
I appreciate it, sir. And, and Friday, we didn't, we didn't go to one lane at all, Friday, Saturday. It was very iffy, it was getting later in the day, and we, we assumed that we probably needed to go ahead and go to one lane while we still could. We expected people to be coming in from out of town to enjoy the evening, and, and some of that took place, so it, it, it worked pretty well, and our timing was, was pretty good.
Right, thank you. And I, I do want to thank public affairs staff, I think y'all do the B alerts during events like this, and very timely, frequent, good job. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions for Chief?
Let me follow up with one thing, Chief, I think was significantly down and due to the, the absence of food trucks, but the litter and the trash was way down, I mean, way down. And I think we need to make sure that, that, that's, you know, in the next cycle of, of a special event, I guess, and ordinances are tweaking, is that, that we need to pay attention to, because it was, it was the best I've ever seen as far as what happens after the action. So, uh, that was, that was good. And that concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. We'll move on to council reports. Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, Fri- Friday, we did the first pitch at Savara Park, and, and a nice crowd, feels looked great, and it would talk to a couple people about the, the security walking across the road, and putting up some signs that we got with Sherri Bell and Billy Ray, and they put up some signs, but they, and they put like a little walkway, so it makes it a lot safer for people to park about a railroad track to walk to the ballpark. So it's just another safety issue, they took care of that. But then a nice crowd, and the feels looked great, lights up, light up, it's the, the L D lights upon.
While you were doing Savara, me and Felix were doing Big S Park, so we were out in the crowd.
I had to see you somewhere.
Yeah, right.
I knew Felix was working. But I, I just thought that was a good thing, and taking care of, it's safety for the kids is always a good thing. So I thought that it went well, and how'd y'all do at Savara Park? I mean.
Strikes, did number strikes, right?
Yeah. Hit it on there. That's good.
That's all.
That was my thing, yeah. I liked that, I thought that was fine.
All right, Mr. Guines?
All right. As, as George was saying. Just one? Okay, I got it. As George was saying, we did the first pitch, the mayor and I taught M E S Park. It was good to see baseball back into our community, and that's, for those who don't know, that's over there by the Garment Falls School. And it was good to see kids out there, with kids passing by, seeing baseball, and it's good that the community is getting involved with it. Also, we had a chance, the mayor and I meet with the C A O of the I P, and discuss getting that parking lot straightened out. So we had a good meeting, and we plan on getting started on that real, real soon. This weekend, I had, this past weekend, I had the honor of hanging out with the Hall of Fame running back, Earl Campbell, you know, did a lot of great, great work with the military, yeah, it was army personnel, and I had the pleasure of having breakfast with him that next morning over at the Toasty Yolk, which is in our community. And it was good to see that new little baseball pad that's out there, that, that he really, really loves this city of Biloxi, and he'll be back for cruising the coast also. Thank you, that concludes my report.
Mr. Demming?
I don't have much, I didn't throw any pitches or hang out with any Hall of Famers this weekend, but I, I did get the, one of the supervisors to agree to help pave Monte Vista, or pave it in general. Do I need to get a resolution approved in order to have them contribute paving that road? Okay, I'll work with my clerks and get that for you guys. That's all I have.
Mr. Tisdale?
Uh, yes. It was brought to my attention by a resident that lives in the enclave, that's Ru Palace Park, because at the very end, it's a cul-de-sac, that there was a, a small fire behind his house, which runs between the houses in the enclave, the southern part, and Audubon Place. Between the railroad tracks and those properties, there's a wooded area, and there are a few homeless here and there in, in that area. This was started, the, the resident said, by one of the homeless people. He said he called the fire department, they used his garden hose to put it out, so wasn't large or anything, but the last fire that was out there burned quite a bit, that was behind Audubon Place, and it's privately owned property, and I'm, I, I don't know how we move the homeless out of there, but I'm just worried, as dry as all that brush is in there, that's gonna be a concern. And some of those residents, their backyard is fenced, and some of the yards are not fenced, so they worry about people coming through. And one lady mayor I'd mentioned to you, I don't know if you recall, a couple of weeks ago, said that it's unnerving to look out there at night at nine-thirty or ten o'clock, and you see lights in the woods behind your house. So I don't, I don't know how many folks are there, I, I know the police department goes through and checks all that, I know it's a concern for the fire department, but.
I think what we're, we need to look at, at that ordinance, so.
Right, say, anything we can do to help those residents sleep a little better and feel a little bit more safe would be appreciated. Was Frank Bordeaux able to get with you on property insurance today? And he had, he had met with Mr. Glavine and Mr. Lawrence and I earlier and talked about a property insurance association, did he mention that to you as well?
Yeah, we, it's been on the table for six months now, and it, it looks like we're at a point that the legislature's gonna help us out, and we'll be able to have the legislation we needed in order to put this team together. For, for, the, simple, short story is, we're, all of the cities on the coast, including the Memorial Hospital and the county school system, wanna pool their resources together into one, one insurance claim, if you will, one insurance. So they took some legislation to be able to do that, and it looks like we're gonna be able to do it now. And, and my understanding is the insurance committee met with Frank and said that they would be, that you would be on board.
Yes, and, and we are, and, and it was suggested that maybe we, you authorize the city attorney to, to work with that association, or help get it organized, I believe, is what they were talking about. There are several different entities involved, Peter, you're aware of that?
Yeah, we, we met with Frank last Friday, and we're, we're discussing if we need to do it through an interlocal, or how we need to do it, but we're, we're on the deadlines.
So we're all on the same page then? Okay, thank you very much, that concludes my report, thank you.
Mr. Glavine?
Thank you. Is, uh, anybody from Parks and Rec here today? In the back, or?
She's with the Department of Health, right. Sherri right now is going with the Department of Health, inspecting all the new camps, summer camps sites.
Okay. All right, I got, I got a couple of things then related to Parks and Rec, and I, I'd like to reiterate some of my colleagues saying how opening day and the pitches and all the excitement of, you know, getting a couple of the neighborhood parks open was quite fantastic. I have, I have a couple of grandsons that were playing at both fields at the same time, so it was a little difficult to see both of them, but it was, it was enjoyable. But on the note, at least at, I don't know if this is the case at Savero, but at Megas, the bases are shorter than what the, what's required of the age groups, and it's because we're missing the plugs to move the bases, and I, I understand the plugs are only ten, fifteen dollars for a plug. Can we make sure that we kind of allocate that so we can have the bases at, at the proper length? I believe the pitching mound was at the proper length, but it, it's almost on top of second base when they're not, you know, at the right distance. Also, the updates on the sports plaques, A.J. Holloway's sports plaques, I understand, and I'm, I'm trying to verify this, Mayor, you got an update on what's going on out there? You want to, if you don't mind giving, I was gonna ask the director to give it.
Sherri's notes, the signing starts tomorrow at the softball, and all the fences are back in place and repaired. Concrete repairs are still being made, and irrigation and installation on Field Four is still being done. That's at softball, the girls softball in the one large baseball field. On the baseball, youth baseball, all fields are turfed, and irrigation is being run right now, and we're still waiting on some fence inside information. So again, we were preparing to give it a rest after it's done for about a month. Mississippi State, you know, the folks from Mississippi State are kind of eyeballing it every week on where we are with regard to the condition of the sod as it's put in. I think all the turf on the women's, on the softballs is, is done and, and it looks really good. So I think the, the sprucing and, and the finishing up are in, in the middle of that right now.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor, for that report. Anyone watching this or listening to this, just be patient, it's important that we kind of install this field and mesh it with the artificial turf and the natural turf correctly so it doesn't cause any issues going forward. On the tennis courts, I understand lighting, is the lighting in place, or?
It's on the agenda, I think the, the contract is on the agenda, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So we still got a little ways to go, get that over the, hold on. Okay, but it's, it's getting there. Okay, thank you for that. Pops Ferry, I know the bridge, there was reports that the bridge was gonna be intermittent in fifteen-minute or so intervals because they, they had some maintenance, that's been postponed. Is there a target for the, for, for doing that, is a target date, or that's to be determined at this point?
I'm not sure. Yeah, Billy Ray's gotta give us a call on that, I don't think he's here.
Okay, so we.
Could they schedule it at night, maybe?
Yeah, so I know there's a lot of experts out there when to do it, when can you schedule it because of either bus schedules or, or other events? I'm sure y'all have looked at that for the optimum time to take the bridge down for those intermittent repairs, I don't know if something in the, at night.
It was announced that we were gonna do it during spring break.
Yes, it was.
Came out, and we said, whoa, whoa, not so fast. And then we said, you know, we could do it on Tuesday, wait till Tuesday, and then the, the maintenance crew got busy and decided they need to push it a little bit further back. It'll be announced, we'll, we'll announce the closure ahead of, ahead of doing it.
Is, is it evening or night?
It is, it could be done tonight.
Possible, okay. All right. All right, thank you for that consideration. And then, I know this has been talked about a lot, but, you know, I, I kind of read the engineering reports on Brazier Bayou sediment removal, the notes say have all permits, plans specs ready to advertise, and the need for funding. Or, do we have that dialogue for the need for funding? That seems to be one of the major hurdles, and if not, can we engage in the proper?
So I'm planning on putting in a Tylenol grant for this year to see if we can't get some funding. We also have, will have some extra Tylenol funds in some other projects that we might be able to pool together, but I won't know until those are complete. So we kind of have a plan, we just, we just gotta get there. Tylenol grants don't go, don't go in until like in June, but.
Okay. All right, thank you, Director.
You're welcome.
And that concludes my report, thank you.
Kenny?
Yes, sir.
On the ball field, you said they're not legal?
They're not at the regulation at, for the twelve and under. I, I know they were playing at, the bases were a little shorter. The main thing is getting that pitching mound at the proper distance, you know, so it's safely from the, the boys that are hitting, or girls that are hitting the ball. So the pitching mound's good, but the bases are a little shorter, and, and it's kind of a little awkward, you know, to see them running on, it's not really a regulation field for that age group.
The base was always six feet, the pitching mound was four to six feet.
Yep.
So we're not at that standard, we're gonna take those and correct that.
Correct.
Is it more than one field, or are they all like that?
Two fields, Megas, I think is what he said.
Yeah, I believe, Megas, I'm not aware of the other, of Savero being.
We checked both of them, tall enough.
Yeah, and I, I think all it needs is those plugs, those base plugs, so they can move the bases, and there's no irrigation that I'm aware of that would interfere with that.
Well, it's something you got to get fixed immediately, you know, definitely.
I don't know.
You load it down?
I don't know.
Okay, they, they take care of that. I'm gonna check with you next week.
I'm asleep? I'm here.
Mr. Schumacher? Nothing? All right. So we'll move on to public agenda, citizen comments. We have a total time allotted of forty-five minutes. Each person gets three minutes each to speak. Once you reach this desk in front of us, please write your name and address on the paper provided, as well as state it out loud for the record. Anyone on my left or right? Yes, ma'am?
Good afternoon, my name is Kay Horn. I reside at two twenty-one Main Street, Biloxi, Mississippi. I will write my name and stuff before I go back to my seat.
Sure.
Um, I've been attending these last few council meetings, and when it came to my being reappointed to the school board of Biloxi Public School District, it's been removed, it's been tabled, et cetera. I just wanted to address a couple of things that was falsely stated regarding me. First of all, Ms. Newman, you had a customer to come to your coffee shop, and my name was brought up, and he says, oh, that's the person who had drugs delivered to her home. Well, that was an incorrect statement, and that is also defamation of character as advised by my attorney. Also, you guys received a letter from me, and, well, not from me, but forwarded to the council by me, and by Marcus Budrow, Superintendent of Public Schools, and it was from the Department of Public Safety, Mississippi Bureau of Narcotics, which said that I had absolutely nothing to do with the packages that were delivered to my home. As a matter of fact, it stated that Kay Horn neither participated in nor had any knowledge of the criminal activity, rather Kay Horn is a victim, a criminal, as criminals used her address and retrieved packages without her knowledge of consent. So that statement was untrue. And in the last meeting that the council had, where the vote was taken to not take the mayor's recommendation, where I was voted off the school board, Mr. Demmings and the rest of the you scratch my back, I'll scratch yours committee, decided that, okay, she's not equipped or fit to, to serve on the school board, which, that's, of course, is your opinion, but I would just like to say, what the devil meant for evil, God meant for good, because Mr. Guines has known me all of his life, since I am his senior, and he knows too that I had absolutely nothing to do, and I'm not a drug dealer now, or will I ever be, a drug dealer, or having packages delivered to my home. As far as an ongoing investigation, there is none. There is a number on my warrant where I went to the police department, as my attorney advised me to do, two-three-one-one-two-five-six-five, that states that when I got the package, it was like thirty-plus pages, it was in reference to a murder that had taken place two weeks prior to that. prior to that. But thank you very much, just FYI. I'm not the person that Mr. Guines has painted me to be. So in that respect, I'll sign my name and everything and just remember, Felix, you reap what you sow and at the end of the day, you will come face to face to the consequences that you have done and I hope and pray that you're ready.
Anyone else on my left or right? Yes, sir?
My name is Michael Raymond Calacod. I'm a former OSHA compliance officer and ISO fourteen thousand, one, two, three, and four. I've been on special assignment here in the three counties of Hancock and Harrison and Jackson County. I've been hired by a private firm to do an audit and I've just about finished that. One of the things that, what?
Close it to the microphone. Thank you.
Well, now can you hear me now? Well, I've been down here to try to straighten up the drug problem with the young kids. Hancock, Harrison, and Jackson County are the three worst counties in the coast with people not taking care and getting their kids under control. Now, I've been Holloway Park for years. I've brought grandkids, I got twenty-one great-grandkids. I'm eighty-one years old and I cleaned up forty-nine from the Breakwater to High Ten with private contractor. Now, that's black bags and black clothes in the middle of the night and you don't see the bums underneath the Dodge bench anymore. Did that privately, out of my own pocket. So you don't see them on the street now. Now, there's this story, but I'll get into it later. Do we have a city planner for Biloxi? Off board? Anybody coordinate volunteer activities? Do I hear anybody? How about Kenny? Ward six, I think I mean yours. I'd like to have a meeting with you in private.
Sure.
Put it on the count. I got some good ideas. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else on my left, your right, that would like to get up and speak? Yes, ma'am? Well, we got another ma'am coming.
And they call me Mr., oh, let's see, Mississippi Michael.
So don't forget it. Good afternoon. I spoke to the council, I think it was last week, a couple of weeks ago. And, you know, I'm just gonna point blank say this. I explained to everybody who asked about Ms. Horn's reappointment to the school board. I explained to them that when your appointment is over, they have the option to renew your appointment or choose someone else. And she understands that. That's not the issue that we are upset about. As a black professional woman who has known Ms. Horn, went to school with her Xavier, who has known Ms. Horn all her life, knew her parents, who are probably turning over at her grave with just the thought that Mr. Guines would try to impede her character. And my bottom line is, if you want to remove someone from the school board, just do it. Just vote to do it. But don't drag their name through the mud to make it look like they have involved in some criminal activity. Because if we look real closely, we might see some other folks who are involved in criminal activity. And if we're not gonna drag everybody through the mud, let's not drag Ms. Horn through the mud. Thank you very much.
Anyone else on my left or right? Ma'am? Yes, ma'am?
Good afternoon, council. My name is Alita Barnes and I live at three-eighty-three Magnolia Street in Biloxi Ward Two. And I have addressed this council several times, specifically last year when we talked about the formation of a special events committee. But I didn't hear anything about the formation of this committee. I don't know if it is public knowledge. If so, I would certainly like to know the names of the people that were on the committee. I would like to know if there was diversity on the committee, especially since Biloxi is comprised of blacks, whites, Hispanics, Vietnamese, and there are different entities that have special events in the city. So certainly, they should have been included in this special events committee. There are events that happen with the second liners who have a parade, we have Mardi Gras, we have the Vietnamese holiday. So all of the citizens of Biloxi should have had a voice in this committee. But it seems to me that this committee was formed not for inclusiveness, but for exclusiveness to make sure that there were those who were excluded in the process. I heard last week that you didn't follow the process. So if everybody is included when the rules are made, then everybody knows the process. So again, I ask that if this committee is public knowledge, that I would please have the privilege of looking into who was on there. And if you have a schedule of events that's invited for the public, I certainly would like to be a part of that, that meeting. Thank you very much.
Anyone else on our left?
How's it going, everybody? My name is Maurice Bryant, everybody. I've been into a few meetings, so I'm sure you guys know I'm one of the promoters for spring break. Also promote events in other areas throughout the year. I'll go over a few things that I have notes here from the weekend. Once again, Mayor and Council, I appreciate everything you guys do to try to accommodate this event. Chief, more of an extremely difficult job that we all understand. Okay. Number one, these are just notes because we've had literally hundreds of people send us things through our channels threatening innocent people with arrest for standing on public sidewalk during the event, but allowing tents and lawn chairs during other events on sidewalks. I heard the chief say that was not happening. There's video of this happening that's all over the internet. The special events ordinance, you know, and how it affects private property owners. In my personal opinion, the city of Biloxi is infringing on private property owners and their rights to do what they please on their private property. So I'm no legal expert, but that's an issue. Police in military tactical gear and carrying AR-15s on Highway ninety during the event spring break. This is not occurring during other events. Yeah, okay. Just the unorganized execution of the special events ordinance by the city of Biloxi and again, not being inclusive. Prior to that, all these meetings that were supposed to be had, I was at the meetings, everyone knew who I was. No one reached out to me, no one reached out to any of the other spring break promoters. We were left out of those meetings. I knew I didn't know when they were held. Ordnance lacks verbiage that actually addresses safety. The event ordinance, to me, in my personal opinion, you know, we had standing laws that could have, if they were properly enforced, probably would have had the same effect rather than the ordinance. Systematically violating civil rights and targeting one event by implementing rules that specifically affect that one event and do not necessarily affect others. The optics of Biloxi and the surrounding cities rejecting tourism due to the race and color of the individuals attending. And my last point, lack of diversity when setting up this special events committee. Thank y'all.
Anyone else on my left, your right, that would like to get up and speak? Anyone on my right, your left, that would like to get up and speak? Anyone else? If not, citizen comments are now closed. Moving on to the policy agenda, Ms. Carey.
Ordnance to amend the zoning district map for the PDC Plan Development Commercial District Master Plan with a preliminary subdivision under the title of Coral Breeze for sixteen fifty-four Beach Boulevard.
I'm moving.
Motion by Mr. Lawrence.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Guines. Being a first reading, we will move on to ordinance B.
Ordnance admitting the code of ordinances relating to the water and sewer rates charged by the city.
Previously moved by Mr. Tisdale and seconded by Mr. Glavin. Any discussion, Mr. Tisdale?
Yes, a couple of comments. First of all, this is, these are increases that are gonna be phased in over the next three fiscal years, correct?
If it becomes effective the first of October, it goes three fiscal years.
Correct. And if I remember correctly, and I'd run a little spreadsheet using five thousand gallons as a figure of water use and what it would cost, and basically it's an increase of about seventy to seventy-four cents per month for each month of that three-year period. So it's a very minimal water increase. And I noticed that you put a document at our seat comparing water rates up and down the coast and it's.
It's all over the state, actually.
Right, right. It's significantly, our rates are significantly lower even with this increase than other parts of the state. The average, for the most part, the single-family residential users, I think, in these figures are a number several years old, I think maybe five or six years old, but it's like sixty-eight to seventy percent of the folks in the city of Biloxi that are billed for water and sewer use three thousand gallons or less, that would still be accurate, I assume. I know we've added more meters throughout the city, but even then, it's gonna be a minimal increase. And the funds generated for this are gonna help replace some of the current infrastructure we have as well as add meters and water and sewer service in parts of the city that don't have it now. That's correct?
We have two problems that we're dealing with. One is areas of the city that don't have service. The other is areas of the city that has old service that has problems. And that's the situation in your ward.
Right. And not only my ward, but other wards as well. And for those folks that follow the transite issue, which was new technology when the water lines were installed forty years ago, they needed to be replaced.
The history, the history of this increase is in the year 2017, when I first was here, we faced a negative amount of money in our water sewer fund. And we passed a four-year, three percent increase, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, and twenty twenty. And in twenty twenty, this council agreed to another increase for four years at two percent, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, and twenty twenty-four this year. So what we're asking is to extend that now with another three percent in twenty twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven.
Right. And not only that, but prior to you getting here, I don't think there had been any water or sewer rate increases for a number of years. And in retrospect, there probably should have. I know at one point, just before you got here, I think we were pulling about a million dollars out of the general fund, maybe a little more every year. Mayor?
Yeah, part of that whole scenario is that I think we were noted that, you know, there needed to be some capital improvement consideration as far as revenue. And I think this is reflective of all of that. You need to have some, you know, some maintenance, you know, capital to keep it flowing into the system. And I think this is reflective of that thought back then in two thousand fifteen.
Right.
Still, when you look at comparison, you know, nobody wants to have an increase of a dollar, much less, you know, significant. So I think we're in a path that is reasonable and manageable and it gives us the ability to, you know, we had, in two thousand fifteen, we had fifty-five miles of streets and drains and so forth, we're tearing up. Now we're moving to the west and so that's gonna give us some capital to address those things that are gonna be popping up.
The only, go ahead.
Councilman, I'm gonna read to you just one sentence that was in the document I handed out last week. The administration is proposing a modest three percent increase for the cost of water. Residents using three thousand to five thousand gallons per month who now pay a dollar forty-one per thousand gallons would, in twenty twenty-five, the first year of this increase, would pay a dollar forty-five per thousand gallons. That is four cents per thousand gallon increase. Four cents per a thousand gallons increase.
The, I would echo a concern that I hear most frequently, or the most frequently mentioned concern that I hear from water and sewer users again is the billing. Sometimes it's late when they receive the bills. And those that wanna pay online, I think they resent that there's a charge for that, but it's a service that's provided, so I understand why there's a charge. Somebody said if there's any way, this is almost a quote, if you can get rid of that antiquated billing system and go with something more modern that gets us. So anyway, I'm just mentioning that in passing and if we can do something about that to make more people happy in the city of Biloxi, you'd be for that, wouldn't you, Mr. Mayor?
That's our goal.
That's everybody happy. Okay, that's all I have. I hope my colleagues support this ordinance revision. Thank you.
Mr. Guines?
Yeah, just wanna touch bases on this. Is this the tier process that we talked about about two years ago with those step increases? And then my second question would be, are we at the level of breaking even yet? Because I knew we, I knew that we were subsidizing water for a long time. And at what point do we get when we get to breaking even in this?
You know, from a business standpoint, you gotta be having, you know, you gotta have some resources to develop in the future as things pop up. You know, there's a lot of things on the radar that we have to have some resources and some revenue to offset, you know, the expenses that things will pop up. I don't think we're ever gonna be in a mode that, you know, we're making too much, so we'll leave it alone for a while. But, you know, the majority of the revenue comes from about thirteen or fourteen big customers. And, you know, so that leaves about fourteen thousand other folks that we've got to, you know, have a, you know, the best plan we can. But we turned a little bit of, you know, increasing the right direction and fund balance a couple of years and, but it's not significant. Every project is a million dollars. There's not one thing that we've seen when it comes to water and sewer that's not a significant investment.
We have, Councilman, we have a project, projects in Ward Five to replace all the water lines. Those projects are unfunded right now, but with a little bit of luck, we'll have enough fund balance to do those. We have a project in Ward Seven that ends up bringing water and sewer to a bunch of neighborhoods that have not had service yet. We have very quietly moved along since twenty seventeen and working on our infrastructure in the water sewer department, including very visible repairs and painting of the elevated water tanks. Almost, they're almost all done now. And, I mean, these kind of projects that were never allowed, never could be done within our own funds. We still pay over sixty thousand dollars a month out of our, out of our sales tax for water sewer loans that the previous administration borrowed in order to do water sewer. borrowed in order to do water sewer. We haven't had to borrow any money since twenty seventeen. We still have sixty thousand dollars a month going out to pay for the, the, uh, SRF loans.
So I guess, I guess I was asking, I know that, I think a while back, we talked about the tier process, and I knew we were getting close to that magic number. And I figured either this was the last one or the next one, um, in, in that process. Or we do one more out of that, out of that, um, plan that we come up with?
Well, we're not going to go in, uh, we, we shouldn't, I say, I can't, it's not my call. We shouldn't go into a, 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 a period when we just tread water again.
Gotcha.
I mean, the cost of things continues to go up, the cost of labor, the cost of material, the cost of these projects are all, as the mayor says, they're all a million dollar here and a million dollar there.
Okay, I'm satisfied.
Okay, anyone else? Go ahead, Mr. Glavin.
Thank you. Um, so most, most of our wards have in place the infrastructure, water and sewer, in, in wards one, two, three, four, et cetera. Ward Six, I, I was just going through some of the roads and I just want to point some of them out. Road five twenty-six, Hudson Crone, Hickman, Audubon, Cary Lane, Skeet Hunt, Lick Skillet, Mason Road, Paradise Lane, Eden Place, Oak Ridge Place, just to name a few. So I don't think, a- a- and really, the, the healthy water system is to have users. The more users you can add to the system, the better it is to, to spread those expenses and improvements, uh, to everyone. So I, I hope we have a plan for some of these folks. I, you know, some of this is in the new section of, uh, Ward Six. And I, you know, I made assumptions that they had water and sewer. And as I walk around and, and talk to some of the residents and find out that they don't, um, you know, we, we need to move in that direction. I know we're trying to get there. So is there a master plan, uh, to encompass some of these areas that I named?
We did, we did a, uh, water sewer, um, water sewer was part, and along with drainage, was part of the Wool Market Master Plan. It was also a West Biloxi Master Plan. But both of those had a series of projects that we could pick as, as we funding was available. And that area, and Hudson Crone you talk about, that, that is a targeted area that we're trying to get more water sewer. Um, one of the things we're going to do with the county next year, in twenty twenty-five, is to run a water line up Lorraine Road all the way to Highway sixty-seven to loop, loop into, um, basically loop, loop into the water system that the county has, that we can draw on to improve the, the, um, well, the, the pressure and the, and the quali- quality and quantity of the water in, in that area of Wool Market and, and Cedar Lake. So we, we, we have a plan.
Okay.
In, in those areas, I think the sewer part of the problem is the biggest challenge, not so much the water. And, but, you know, this reaches back to nineteen nineties and in those situations where, uh, you know, it was just a, a thought back then. But we're trying to make it a reality, I think, as we can with Utility Authority. You know, we are twenty-four percent of the Utility Authority. And there's a number of projects that they've, you know, uh, identified and, and will be part of because, you know, we're, we're, uh, some of the municipality, a big part of the municipality and that whole, uh, configuration that we're going to try and reach everyone. And then, you know, the, the more customers, the easier it is for everyone. And I think there's some, some challenges and opportunities in, in those areas that you mentioned.
Okay, I, I need to get a little bit more, uh, I guess educated and aware of the plan. Because this is a new section and, you know, is it a five-year, seven-year, or, or are we talking about longer? Uh, you know, because I'm trying to answer some of the questions and, and I don't know if it's a quick fix. And it may be for some of the areas and some of the other areas may be more difficult.
As you look at things, and again, in, in Wool Market and these other areas, especially with Wool Market, you know, a lot of, a lot of towns, and David, we've heard this a lot, you know, you can get water, but you gotta hit sewer at the same time. So, I mean, the whole, the challenge there is to eliminate, uh, you know, get it to a processing, not, uh, in a septic tank situation. And that's the challenges we've seen out there in the last ten years for sure. And, and at the Utility Authority, that was the biggest challenge, the people signing up for water and, and not sewer.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
I was, I was waiting. The last eight years, how much money did you collect? How many products have we done? You said we had to spend three straight years. So how much money have we collected? And how many products have we completed?
I get that for you. I don't mind that. I, I know numbers, but I don't know that number.
I want to know what's the balance in water sewer fund?
Oh, yeah, it's just right around, you know, I, it, it varies by the month, but, you know, you, you, you got a fun, increase in fund balance of a million. And I know in the last three years, I've seen it, but I've seen it on the, on the wrong side, too. You know, once, once you, you balance your, 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 uh, your increase, your, your revenue and expenses, increase or decrease in fund balance, it, it, it's around a million dollars a year, but you gobble it up in a project, one project, much less, you know, ten projects. So it could be turning, you know, uh, uh, but it, it depends on, you know, if you, uh, if you have a, an emergency repair, uh, you know, when a sewer line breaks like at the, uh, a, around Pops, around Pops Ferry Bridge, that could, you know, you could build, uh, an emergency repair of, of a sewer situ- situation is built through the Utility Authority. And that gobbles up seven, eight hundred thousand dollars in, in, in forty-eight hours. So those are the kinds of things we've experienced, especially with, with sewer. And, uh, you know, we, we would, uh, if you could turn a million dollars a year and depend on it, then you could manage these projects. I think that would be a good target to, to, to increase your fund balance a million a year. Then as you go through, you expense those things, but, you know, you want to get at least a million.
Well, it was all in favor of passing this, so that we could upgrade everything we had in the water system. And then you said you got two projects in Ward Five and seven that's not funded. Why is that?
Well, yeah, again, these are, these are the multimillion dollar projects with, uh, no identifiable, uh, grant or, or source of revenue. So you do it as you can.
So the increase had, had not been enough, what you're saying.
Of to do all the, you know-
It came from the two projects that we need to get done. That's two big wards you need to take care of, five and seven. You know, a lot of growth in seven, definitely. So we're short, how much money to, uh, fund both of those?
Well, I mean, you could, you could do twenty million dollars in projects out there. It could be enough. But you, and it's not, it's not feasible to do that. You can phase it in and, and, and get where, you know, you're bang for your buck. And, and, you know, satisfy something special when it comes to sewer out in those, in those areas. And, you know, that was a whole, uh, uh, idea behind Utility Authority is, is to clean things up and to make sure nothing reaches, you know, our, our, our water systems and, and, uh, and you, you can hear a lot of things that kind of peeves us. There's another thing that may be popping up, that you don't know, uh, what it's going to cost you. And, uh, I think we opted out of it, didn't we? But it, it's, 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 pardon the pun, it's fluid. I mean, you've got to pay attention, very dynamic on what you can do. And just, you know, be wise in what you bite off a- as we go through. But I think we're, these step increases are going to put us in a, a manageable situation where we, you know, have a, a million dollars of, of revenue over expenses every year, but then bury that in projects to, to, uh, you know, go borrow twenty million dollars right now, you get three and a half percent and then figure out how you do that. But how, the bang for the buck is, is what you need to figure out.
Yeah, I mean, it's kind of, you know, we gotta, we, you can't stop growing. So we gotta take care of Ward Seven and Five, it needs something done. And we need to put down places to start working on that. And that's where the majority of the money needs to go to. And that's fine, because that's probably the biggest growth, that's probably in Wool Market. There's a lot of people moving and growing out there. So we definitely got to keep up with that, because that's increased all this in the long run anyway. That's more money you're taking in. So I don't think anybody has a problem with increasing it. I'm just going to say we're going to make sure we're getting done what we're supposed to be getting done. Because this is all in the enterprise fund, can't spend anywhere else. Got to be spent on this.
Right.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Call for the question, all in favor? All against? Six, one. Moving on. Resolution C.
Resolution to grant final subdivision plot approval for nineteen lot, single-family townhome subdivision development titled as Lost Garden Villas for one twenty-six De Bees Road.
I'll make that motion for discussion purposes.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Tisdale, seconded by Mr. Glavin. Go ahead, Mr. Tisdale.
Mr. Creo, please. So this is Lost Garden Villas, which is behind the gas, uh, the convenience store with, with gas there on the corner of De Bees and Highway ninety, roughly. And just, do I remember correctly, because this, I guess the status of this property's gone through several changes in terms of zoning and variances and a lot of other stuff. But originally, there were supposed to be, if I remember correctly, twenty-one townhomes there, is that accurate?
That's correct, yes, sir.
And, um, couple of things, forgive me for reading this. The square footage variance, uh, would allow the townhouse lots to be less than the eighteen hundred square feet. Lots one to six would be twelve hundred square feet. Lots seven to eight would be fifteen hundred square feet. Lots nine and ten would be twelve hundred and sixty square feet. And lots eleven through twenty would be at least sixteen hundred square feet. So they're all under eighteen hundred square feet.
That's correct, yes.
So in the resolution, if I read it correctly, this is to grant final subdivision plot approval of nineteen?
Nineteen, yes, sir.
But it, but it lists twenty, um, apartments, basically. Eleven through twenty would be at least sixteen hundred square feet. So are we looking at nineteen or twenty units?
We're looking at nineteen. That's what's on here. The, the council has already approved the preliminary plot.
Correct.
Which gives them the authority to go in and put in all the infrastructure. They've done that. The infrastructure's put in, the engineer, city engineer's satisfied with it. Uh, Lot eleven may or may not be able to be built on, because that's the one that we had the issue with the tree zone. So the only way Lot eleven could be built on is if they brought us, uh, a project, a design that would work with those trees that are located in that area.
And, and where I was going with it, with the count on nineteen or twenty, because due to the destruction of some of those trees, the owner had, was willing to forego two units.
That's correct, yes, sir.
So that's twenty-one units, minus the two would give you nineteen. That's why I had the question about nineteen or twenty units. Um, that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Creo.
Mr. Glavin?
Uh, I don't have anything to add.
Anyone else?
Yes. Uh, these last twelve hundred, what are you going to put on there? That's going to be pretty small. That's a lot, it's pretty small.
These are, it's all going to be townhomes. The whole thing is going to be-
They connected?
Uh, in some cases, yes, sir. In some cases, they are. They'll be like six connected on one side and another place it'd be three or four connected. Uh, they're spread out, uh, throughout the property.
That's a lot, that's a lot of small land. I mean, I don't know, are we going to be two stories, one stories, elevated?
Mike, uh, we haven't received the building plans yet, but my understanding is, is that they'll be two-story.
I mean, that's, that's probably pretty small. So how far apart the house is going to be? If you have six together, you have three sets of six, or are you going to have individuals anyway? Are you going to have just groups of fours or fives or something like that?
There's group, it's, it's in your packet, Mr. Lawrence. It shows the floor pla- the, uh, site plan with the number of units that are on each one.
I didn't have that in front of me, so I was just refreshing a question to you.
Okay.
Because you're the expert, you're supposed to be the expert, you know?
Well, I think, I think I do a pretty good job answering questions. It might not be what you want to hear, but, uh, but it's, it's true. Um, but there'll be like four together, and then they'll have, uh, a paved area between it for parking. And then they'll have maybe four on the other side of it. But in those areas, they are connected. But it's different number of buildings there.
And I need, uh, I don't know if we have, to make, you can't make these short-term rentals, because that's way too many run tests on that. So they got, it's just going to be running monthly?
No, this wouldn't, this wouldn't, this would not apply, because the, the only regulation on the short-term rentals had to do with conditional uses. And this would be used by right. So in a used-by-right situation, there's no limit on that number of short-term rentals.
Because it's in an area where it's supposed to be allowed.
That's correct, yes, sir.
As a CB.
Yes, sir, it's-
So that's why we changed it to CB. It wasn't CB originally, so we changed it to that.
Mm-hmm, CB, yes, sir.
Okay.
Anyone else? All in favor? Unanimous votes brings us to Resolution D.
Resolution to grant preliminary subdivision plot approval for a four-lock commercial subdivision development titled Thomaston Medical Park for one two two nine zero and one two three zero zero North Oaklawn Lane.
Can we have a motion?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Shoemaker and seconded by Mr. Tisdale. Any discussion, Mr. Shoemaker?
Just want to say, if I can, not only that this would be great for Ward Seven, Biloxi, and really the whole, I mean, Gulf Coast, honestly. I think, uh, in the plans, there's, I want to say, four medical buildings they're planning on, maybe a hotel, drugstore, restaurant, commissary. So, I mean, it's going to be a big development. And, uh, I, not only that, we, great to be up in Ward Seven, but I really do, I think it's going to be great for, for the coast and Biloxi altogether. And they're moving forward. I mean, they're, they're anxious to get started and they're going to get everything approved.
Okay, Mr. Tisdale?
I can't add anything to what Mr. Shoemaker said. Thank you.
Anyone else? All in favor? Unanimous vote brings us to Resolution E.
Resolution confirming an appropriate mayor's appointment of Gary D. Gray to the Board of Trustees of the Biloxi Municipal School Board.
I'm over that.
Motion by Mr. Guines. Seconded by Mr. Demming. Any discussion, Mr. Guines?
Yeah, good individual, come from a great family. Uh, his dad built the Golden Fisherman in the V-Marche. Um, nothing, nothing bad to say at all.
Mr. Demming? Anyone else? All in favor? Unanimous vote with Glavin out of the room. Do we have a motion on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Tisdale, seconded by Mr. Lawrence. Any discussion, Mr. Lawrence?
Yes, sir. I noticed it's, uh, K. With your lots, they out of business. But I guess my question to you, Mike, uh, of, of, of is, you're going to have to probably put the water line in anyway for anybody to operate their business, even if there's not one there now. So you terminated the contract, Bob, because it's just empty? But, I mean, does it have to be done anyway? Because somebody should have checked out over and do it. That was my question, maybe.
Not going to take the pipe up. The pipe is staying. The pipe's going to stay, but we're ending the agreement. Am I right, Ray?
Yeah, the, the-
We're ending the agreement with this particular firm, which is no longer in business. The gray water pipe will stay, though. And if somebody needs to move back in there, they would just simply apply, be able to use it for their effluent.
All you're doing is just eliminate, uh, eliminate it with a lot that went out of business or closed up.
Right, he was paying-
So if somebody comes into it, then you could, what?
He was paying a small amount of rent each year for the, uh, use of the pipe. And he's out of business now, so he didn't want to pay rent anymore because he's not in business. So we're terminating the agreement, but the pipe will stay to be used in the future by the next business.
I'm just trying to get that part straight, you know?
Anything else?
Yeah, and, uh, I know substitutes is, is five T. And we said we're talking about water rates and increasing, which had nothing to do with this year. But I'm totally against paying two million dollars for anybody building on, that floods and hurricanes. I don't really see the need of it. So I don't understand why we wasted that much money when we was selling the, wait a minute. That's your idea? Don't agree with that. We got a piece of land sitting right there, so you could build a building on it and put anything you want in it. So we, why spend two million on another piece of property that's going to flood? I know you got a Ritten Johnson's for sixty thousand. So, I mean, we spent all this money on Division Street. We got land all over the city. Across the bay, you could, uh, buy a place, you could put anything you want, out of all the weather, out of hurricanes, out of everything. I mean, to spend two million dollars on a building, first of all, it's an old building that floods. And you got property right there that you could build your own building, probably for just around a thousand dollars. Just building a, pretty much a garage to park everything in. So now I, I just can't see any reason to spend that kind of money at all for that piece of property where it's located. So, now, I just can't see any reason to spend that kinda money at all for that piece of property where it's located.
Can I respond?
Sure, if I answered these questions.
Have you seen the building, have you seen the building, that building?
I have a building, but I found it on the-
The building, the building that we're exiting, because of the agreement that was gonna be, uh, the rent was gonna be jacked up, which we're paying about eighty-something thousand a year right now. We would move everything that's in the, the Johnson Diesel building to that building, it's much bigger than what we have. It's, it's also at the level, the foundation is at the level of the railroad tracks. And it's sitting right next to the property that's, uh, that we will be able to join, uh. The, the lay-down yard that we have now will be, you know, I think it's twenty-five thousand square feet, is that what it is? And, uh, it really will give us a combination, to offset the combination of expenses we're doing with Johnson Diesel, which is about eighty thousand plus another nine thousand in taxes that would be going back onto the land row. And then about thirty thousand for the training building that the police can do, so that all these new functions will be like, located in that one building. You cannot build that building with that foundation at that level for two million dollars, I can tell you, I can tell you right now. It's got, uh, there's a former, uh, uh, office space of about sixty-five hundred square feet that, uh, uh, Met Analysis is located in. It's, uh, it, it's a, it's a steal, not a deal. And, uh, we're, we're very fortunate, I think, uh, that the numbers will not only offset the interest that we will be anticipating, but also it gives us an opportunity to offset some of the training that will be, uh, in, you know, the police department's, uh, ballgame that will eliminate the number of, uh, training expense that we have. So, it will probably break even or be a little bit, but put us in a better position, but it's, it's a, it's a, it's a fine building. And, and I can tell you, we couldn't build that building on that property right now for two million, I can assure you.
Oh, you definitely don't wanna build anything down there, cause then Camille and Katrina both have had four or five feet of water right now.
Well, you know, I understand that.
Built it up.
I understand that, but where, you know, it, the thing-
Those are facts.
Well, anyway, we, we just have to respectfully disagree, and I would, but if you wanna come with meetings down there, nine o'clock in the morning, we're gonna be touring the place at nine o'clock in the morning, I can assure you. This is, this is a, this is a real good opportunity.
Rather spend a two million dollars on a piece of property that we own.
Well-
Now, I don't care if you do it, and, uh, what about the five states company?
Well, that's the whole idea is to build that complex, cause it's located in, right next to that facility. And the number of things that we gotta move off Johnson, you'll be surprised on, on, uh, how this is gonna work out. But you need to see this building, if you know, if you're not convinced.
Yeah, I mean, I know the building, I know the building well, yeah. I just don't think we should be spending that kinda money where we could do something ourselves, where we profit from the whole thing, not profit for somebody else's. Yeah, I can't support that.
Point taken, move on to the next one. Anything else?
I don't know anything, let me see, I don't think so, but anyway, I'll come back, let somebody else say something.
Can I, can I comment on the building, since we're on the building?
Okay.
Briefly, I'll make it brief. Um, are we planning to pay cash for this, or are we gonna finance it, Mayor?
We, we, it's a good question. Uh, we, you know, we had the, uh, a favorable rate, I think you passed the, the ability to put a bond at three-point-five percent. And that's, this is, this is a, another huge opportunity. So, we're gonna finance of this five million potential, we would finance probably two-point-two-five, that's how I generate the hundred-and-sixty thousand a year in, in debt service versus the hundred-and-ten, a hundred-and-twenty thousand that we're paying right now for rents.
And we don't own anything.
And we'll be owning this, yeah, right.
Okay, thank you.
So, we're spreading that, as I said, three-point-five is what we calculated, three-point-two, two-point-two-five million, cause we're gonna do some improvements to join the lot as well as the building to create a, a really, you know, a corner there that, uh, is gonna be similar to, uh, uh, the area that Mississippi Power has their warehouse and, and, and their lay-down, and that's what we envision there.
On the other side of Crawford, or, no, Oak, Oak Street, I think.
And if you get in that building, you can, you can see that, that, the, the actual foundation is at the level, I don't know what the elevation is, but the level of railroad tracks, and they specifically did that. And there's a, uh, Mark Holland and, and, you know, uh, uh, Desport, and, uh, uh, really put a lot of design in that, in that foundation.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Tisdale.
So, Mayors, is this, i- is it smaller or larger?
Larger.
How much larger roughly, percentage-wise?
Uh, it's, uh, probably thirty percent more, I think, as far as square foot, that, those other buildings were spread out, this is a very consistent building with, you know, uh, uh, you know, higher ceilings and the ability to tie in with, uh, uh, you know, we're, improvements to the parking lot, it, it, you know, on that, that we already own, but we tying up, uh, uh, the buildings together to really have a, a really solid complex.
You said the, the floor of this new, of, of, what we're looking at is higher?
At the level of the railroad tracks.
Okay, well, that doesn't mean anything to me.
But I mean, I don't think it, I don't know how much the flood, what was over the railroad tracks at that point, but it's, it's significant.
All I know about the railroad tracks, when a hurricane comes through, is everything north of the tracks has mud from the bay, everything south of the tracks has sand from the beach.
Yeah, well, I know if we, if, you know, if a hurricane came and, and, you know, we would have issues with what's in the Johnson Diesel that I think we would have here.
If it's level with the railroad tracks, it's at the highest point in that area as far as elevation, so.
That, that, that's not very hard of, did y'all remember Katrina? The water came down the railroad track, and it met from the Gulf and the Bay, going that way, that's why it flooded so bad, that's why it flooded so bad down there. It's all low line, and they're trying to do it anytime you have a major hurricane, whether it's Camille, Katrina, whatever. I just don't see, anyway, that's just my opinion.
No, I can't vote for that, that's okay.
It's bigger, it's, uh.
Got anything? Go ahead, Mr. Deming.
Mr. Crell, I, I think I was confused on the location of this property. Um, is this division near Porter, near the new?
No.
Where are we at?
This is an Oak Street, right, the railroad tracks.
Okay.
And, uh, Oak Street ties in, you know, where Oak Street and Division Street, uh, come together, and the railroad tracks come together, that little corner. We own a part that, that, uh, of, of sort of the, the, uh, I think it was French's, uh-
On the north side of railroad, between Crawford and Oak Street.
Uh, no, no, not Desport, see-
Crawford, yeah, same between Crawford and Oak Street.
Right.
On Division Street. You got Johnson and then right, didn't you, right, you got Johnson and you got-
Next to Coogis, next to Coogis proper.
Coogis is the other side.
Yeah. Some of it goes all the way to Oak Street, and some of it goes to-
Yeah, he got the machine shop there.
The machine shop and, and the, the, uh, strip mall, and the railroad, and, so that, sort of an L-state, uh, piece of property.
Built that new building right there.
Right.
On side of him.
Right. I don't know how many acres, but the whole property we have is about three acres, you think? Three acres, yeah, that we have, then plus the, say, another half acre. But that go, that building goes from Division Street all the way to railroad track.
Right, and I built, yeah, that was the old barn used to be, our property, that's where the barn used to be.
The property was, yeah, and then this building ties it next to it.
Right, and then you go to Johnson's, the next one.
Yeah, that's two buildings, I think, yeah, two more buildings down, yeah.
Anyone else? No, pop for the question, I mean, I'm sorry.
No.
No, I'm sorry, anything else you wanna discuss, Mr. Lawrence?
That's all.
No, do you have anything you wanna discuss, Mr. Guines?
No.
Mr. Deming? Mr. Tisdale?
Yeah, and Mike, I talked with you the other day, I just wanna pose it publicly on, on item X, that's Janice King, Janice King providing steam cleaning there of the, um, Sanger Theater interior, uh, repair site. And you said it's really to clean it up, it needs to be cleaned up, but we really don't have an opening date set at this time for the Sanger Theater, is that correct?
Correct. Let me tell you, what we're doing is assessment, uh, of the internal, uh, you know, fiber optics was a thing that was brought up, you know, at, at, uh, so there, we've actually engaged, uh, some folks to do really an assessment of what's needed in audiovisual. And, uh, I think the Impact Center, uh, which is a sixty, sixty-million-dollar building, it's going through some growing pains that we're gonna, uh, uh, the folks that, that were engaged there are gonna help us, tell us what we need to do as far as the latest technology inside the Sanger. So, that's ongoing right now.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Glavine? Mr. Shoemaker? Okay, all in favor of the consent agenda? Unanimous vote, any exceptions, Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, five T.
Five T. And Mr. Guines? Mr. Deming? Mr. Tisdale? Mr. Glavine? Mr. Shoemaker? Okay, so, Mr. Lawrence is again, um, five T, all right. Code enforcement?
Item A on the agenda, Sanjeev Arbatka, Zero Pass Road, this property's still in violation.
Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of Sanjeev at Zero Pass Road? If not, this case is closed.
Item B, Dorothy Bullard, two-forty-nine Nichols Drive, this property's still in violation.
Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of Dorothy Bullard? All right.
We are, they had, oh, asses to clean up the, uh, break the, uh, law mows and they cover the car up and everything and all that business.
All of it's been taken care of? Okay, um, what I'm, what I'll do is I'll give, I'll put down sixty days and just make sure everything is in order. You got sixty days, and if everything is in order, just kind of, uh, confer with the code department, okay?
All right.
Okay, motion for sixty days by Mr. Guines, second by Mr. Lawrence, all in favor? Unanimous vote?
I'm glad I ain't, I ain't had to talk, I, I can hardly get my words out.
All right.
Due to a-
Need a hand up. You gotta give a hand up there, Jerry.
Glad you came.
All right.
Item C, Michael R. Callicod, one-one-three-six-five Ruth Court, this property's still in violation.
Is anyone here to speak on behalf of Michael Callicod at Ruth Court?
At BB. You want me there?
Oh, that's you? Yes, sir, come forward, please.
I've been to chairman of a couple of boards, I've moved some boards, and, well, it don't look like that today.
Get, get close to the microphone. Jerry, give him the microphone.
My golly, that was today, wasn't it? Oh, wait a minute. Maybe I'm just a, wait a minute, I'm eighty-one years old, and I was up at four and worked till eleven-thirty. Does it look any better? What am I doing? If I get rid of everything you see there, would it be all right if I did it in a couple of days?
Mm-hmm.
Maybe I could get some help, but I'm eighty-one. I ain't got nothing left, dude, why don't I just clean it up in two days? Could I do that?
Can, can you handle it in about thirty days? Can you get it all cleaned up in thirty days?
Yeah, you got it.
You mind doing it for us?
Thirty days.
If, if you can do it in thirty days, I'm motioning to give you thirty days.
Tomorrow to take the face off the house and make it look brand new.
I object to that, Councilor.
You object to it?
Uh, respectfully, I do, I, I mean, if the, if everybody wants to, uh, vote on it, that's fine.
What are you gonna do to me?
Uh, this property's been in disrepair, uh, for quite some time, uh, code enforcement's been out there a number of times. Uh, the residents, uh, have complained and, and endured, uh, the condition of this property for, uh, quite some time. And, uh, I, I think it's, I think we oughta move forward.
What are we gonna do, Kenny?
I, I don't know what we're gonna do, but, uh, this, your property, we've been working, you know, trying to get you to clean this up, and, and, uh, it, it hasn't worked, and that's why we're here today.
Well, what are we gonna do with it?
Uh, we'll, we'll assess it, and, uh, we'll get the property cleaned up, uh, for the neighborhood, and that'll be, uh, assessed on your, uh, property taxes. So, somebody will come help you clean it up, and, uh, they'll assess that on your property taxes.
Well, I thought I had thirty days.
No, we haven't voted on that.
Well, maybe you better.
Okay.
Better wake up.
I'll, I'll withdraw, I'll withdraw, um, if, if Ms. Crell's recommendation, I'll withdraw.
Yeah, are you done with me?
Yep.
So, Mr. Crell, if we move-
So, what are we gonna do?
One second, sir.
So, if we, if we move forward on this, um, there's still a final opportunity to clear up all this property.
Clear it up before we get the contractor out there.
Exactly.
I got a contractor coming in the morning.
There you go.
Yeah, okay.
Sounds good.
Yeah, I understand, thank you, Mr. Crell. Be wonderful.
Hey, Jerry.
Making everybody happy, Mr. Mayor.
Jerry, have we, uh, give him time before?
Okay. Case closed.
Item, item D on the agenda, Geteras LLC, Zero Bayview Avenue, uh, that case has been resolved. Item E on the agenda, Michael Clark Hester, two-five-nine-two Old Bay Road, this property's still in violation.
Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of Michael Clark Hester? Okay. Afternoon.
I only intend to cut my grass, is that what you're asking?
Is that what the issue is, Mr. Crell?
That's, uh, one of the issues, uh, we have some junk cars on the property, we've got trash in the rental property. So, what we would do is, um, if, if Mr. Hester doesn't do it, then we would hire a contractor if the council looks that way to deal with it. Trash and litter and overgrowth.
I would show the council that the last contractors came onto my property illegally entered the property, uh, from the east, through my fence that you were requesting me to tear down, which I did. Uh, I have a driveway, has a sign, they didn't bother to come down the driveway. They were outside my home while I was asleep, I didn't know who they were, went out and addressed them. They told me who, they told me who they were, what they were there for, how they had entered the property and they left. The cars are not junk cars, each one of the cars, operable vehicle, they all run with excepting one. Belongs to a client of mine, I'll have him. Actually, I know about exposed when I cut the grass for the first time since nineteen eighty-three. I had a neighbor that moved in there about three years ago, he lives at a loop, his name is Victor Yates, I think it's four-thirty-five, he's my neighbor. He's, that his wife, Herbus, scared of snakes, and would I mind if he cut my grass and he would maintain it? I reluctantly let him do that, he cut it about four or five times, and now the grass has grown back the way I've kept it since nineteen eighty-three. I now have back my butterflies, my bumblebees, my lightning bugs, which had all disappeared with the grass. when the grass was cut. I don't think I'm subject to any statute that would require me to cut the grass. I haven't done it since eighty-three. Uh, my lot is seventy-seven by over eight hundred feet, meaning subdivision next door, not a member of any property association. Also contiguous to the property to the west, which is sixteen house trailers, thirteen of which are unoccupied and occupied by possums and raccoons and homeless people. Uh, there are also, for each, for every two trailers, there's a septic tank, never been connected to the city. Uh, and that property to my west that has the trailers on it is wholly overgrown, uh, runs directly into Big Lake Road as does, I'm sorry, to Big Lake and to the bay as does my property. I don't want to cut my grass, I don't intend to cut my grass. If I can clean up anything, need.
Has this property been before as before, Mr. Creel?
Yes, yeah.
Mr. Creel, is, is Mr. Hester being asked to mow the entire property or just around his house?
Anything that would be in violation is, one of the reasons we run into situations like this is because you'll have a neighborhood where all the property owners maintain their property. You'll have one property where it's overgrown. We get complaints that there's rats and possums and all these other things running out of that overgrowth onto their property. They want to know why they're held to a certain standard and their neighbors not held to that standard.
Right.
Uh, have to answer those kind of questions all the time.
Sure. Mr. Hester, is your property fenced entirely around the perimeter, of course, except where you, where you entered the property from Old Bay?
Except from where my new neighbor put his fence, which is an iron fence that's about four feet tall. Um, you know, he complained with snakes, he put in an aluminum fence, three of them three inches apart and it's maybe four. He installed that fence, um, the rest of the property, I have a solid wooden, at least six feet tall.
Except for that spot with your neighbor?
Except for that spot that he, uh, built there. Now, this is my second trip to this council. I've been in Beluphe since eighty-three with, on that property with the home I built there. Uh, and I was, uh, physically unable to build a part of the fence. I let someone else do it and y'all pointed out to me that there were nails protruding on his side and I went the next day after this meeting, took that part of the fence down, it was maybe sixty feet. And y'all were right, nails did not have been protruding like that and I took that part of the fence down.
All right, are, are you able to replace that part of that sixty feet of fence that was removed? Are you able to replace that at this time?
Replace that part.
Could you do it within the next sixty days?
Certainly.
That, that would help perhaps with the, with the wildlife concerns. Um, the trucks are an issue as well?
Um, not in this case, we are bringing trucks to you. The ordinance says that if you have a vehicle on your property and it's inoperable, partially dismantled, then it falls into that category where it's a violation and supposed to be removed.
Could you resolve these issues, Mr. Hester, you think, in the next sixty days?
I believe I can.
Okay, with, with the understanding that sixty days from now, um, you'll have an opportunity before the council again if you've not resolved those issues and.
Uh, well, it doesn't belong to me and I'll be back in my.
Understand, I understand that and the, the code enforcement officers that monitor all of this will be reporting to Mr. Creel, so sixty days, he'll let us know if you're still in violation or not.
I hope they let me know when they're coming. I hope they would come down my driveway and not talk about.
Okay.
When property.
We'll call in this guy.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Creel. Uh, I would, uh, recommend that we give Mr. Hester an additional sixty days to comply.
Motion by Mr. Tisdale for sixty days, seconded by Mr. Lawrence, all in favor.
Okay, they approve sixty days.
Is that unanimous or no? All against?
I didn't want to do it.
Okay, we got two against. Five for, hm?
Yes, sir.
I meant five for it.
The things listed.
Two against, yes.
Okay.
Moving on to.
Item F, Rebecca Oliver, one two three two four Joe Hustley Road, this property's still in violation.
Can I ask when's the last time the pictures has been taken?
What was the question?
Pictures April. Can I ask when the last time these pictures have been taken?
They were taken yesterday.
Yesterday? Okay, we'll have different pictures. Can I show y'all?
Sure.
You don't need to show them too. Bring it here, bring it.
What happened to that picture?
Yeah. Yeah, just do thirty days and let them recheck it.
We'll go and give you.
I see that.
What, what is it?
Yeah, she's saying.
Thank you. When would those pictures take it?
Mr. Creel, should we just let it go and if it is cleaned up, then you're going to cancel it or should we give her thirty days?
I would give her time so that we can go out there and verify that it has been cleaned.
I'll make a motion for thirty days.
Yeah, I'll second.
But I have another question too. I mean, they keep telling me I need to cut my grass. It's farmland, I have cows, I have a garden. Do they expect me to cut that too?
Director?
I'll have to look at the actual photographs of the entire property and see, naturally we don't expect them to quite cut pasture land or something like that. The area around the house certainly needs to be.
I mean, this is across from our road.
Is this zoned agricultural?
It was.
I, I'm not sure, I would guess it's either agricultural or maybe residential estate.
Yeah.
Okay.
Has been for years.
Okay, so we're going to give you thirty days by Mr. Glavine, seconded by.
I'm packing it.
Seconded by Mr. Schumaker, all in favor? Unanimous votes?
Item G, Deandre Pfeifer, two forty-one Nichols Drive, that case has been resolved. Item H, War Properties LLC at all, Zero Bayview Avenue, that case has been resolved. And on item I, John Warwick and Mary Loper, uh, one one zero four three Jolly Road, we would ask for sixty days on that, they are working with us on that one.
Motion by Mr. Deming and seconded by Mr. Guines for sixty days, all in favor? Unanimous votes? This brings us to the routine agenda.
I'm moving.
Motion by Mr. Lawrence.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Guines, any discussion, Mr. Lawrence?
Yes, uh, bring the check.
Good afternoon, Council. All right, not as good news as I was hoping from our last meeting. The one point four four million is still in step three of five in the Mississippi PA process. We're waiting on the guard, the governor's authorized, uh, representative to approve that. We've emailed MEMA twice and spoken to them verbally last Thursday, asked them to let pace, put that up the chain of command. I think with the storms, um, they're kind of took their attention off and they're assessing the damages from our storms from last week. Um, so they, they haven't, uh, got it into step four or five, but hopefully by next Tuesday at our meeting, I'll be able to give a better progress report.
So is we, we just waiting on the one point four?
Yes, sir.
Anything else you got behind that?
We will, we'll know next Thursday, I believe, because we, on our next, uh, council meeting on the docket, we have a bunch of invoices and pay applications, which MEMA has and they're reviewing them. So once that's approved, we should have a significant amount of money behind that also.
If those are approved, then we should be pretty much caught up.
Sir.
If those are approved, we should be pretty much caught up where we're supposed to be.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? All in favor of the routine agenda? Unanimous votes? Motion to adjourn?
I'm moving.
Motion by Mr. Deming, seconded by Mr. Guines, all in favor? Motion, I mean, meeting is adjourned. Immediately going into the next meeting.
We'll take a five minute break.
I got somewhere to go.